To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and to liberty and justice for all.
Just want to take this opportunity before we open up to our budget, public budget hearing this evening, to welcome our new business official, Victoria McLaren. Hopefully, Victoria will be here with us for quite a while, so we welcome you aboard, Victoria. Okay, tonight, first part of our opening session is our budget public hearing, so we'll turn that over to the superintendent and the business.
Yes, so I believe Mrs. Doudilemic and Ms. McLaren are going to all come up to the podium, and I'll meet you there in just a second. So I'd just like to mention to the board and to the public, I want to thank everyone for helping get the budget together. So this is the Board of Education, all the hard work of our building level administrators, our directors, of course, Victoria McLaren and Sarah. I'd like to especially thank Dr. Don Gottlieb. So Don, once again, came to our rescue. He came in as an interim and did a phenomenal job. His leadership, his expertise, his experience, you can't measure it. I truly thank him for all his work, and I do have just a small token of our appreciation for Dr. Gottlieb, wishing him luck again in his failure to retire. And thank you to Mrs. Gottlieb, too, for giving Don to us. Thank you very much. It takes a family's support, certainly, in any of these positions. So again, to the public and to the Board of Education, representing the 2021-2022 school budget. As always, we start with our mission statement. In a safe and caring learning environment, we inspire students to make connections, think critically, and become productive global citizens who create legacies that make our community proud. We're here for the students. It's all about the students. This year's budget, the 2020-2021-2022 budget, the revenue of $47,133,657 is our proposed revenue and the proposed budget for next school year. Mrs. Doudilemic, would you just take a moment to review over some of the specific nuances of the budget?
So we don't have too many new positions in this budget for 2021-22, but there are a few that I could deal with you. First of all, you might remember that last year we cut health teacher. It was really a PE teacher that retired at the middle school. We did not fill that position, so a teacher from high school moved down to the middle school in that we were not able to offer health classes at the high school this year. So we need to reinstate that position next year. So it's a one-to-one health/PE teacher. The majority of it, especially to catch up from this year, will be health courses or help sections of health, but we will have a few PE sections in there as well. So that's really a replacement. It's not brand new. Next year, we would like a .5, a half-time speech teacher, and that's to meet increased needs of our students, not only because of new and different students coming in, but also a result of the pandemic, too, and needs that we weren't able to fulfill this year. We have a full-time elementary position. That's to replace a retirement for this year, end of the year. So that's not a new position. We will be adding a social studies teacher. The social studies teacher will actually travel from the middle school to other high school. Again, that's really a replacement from a position we did not fill, a retiree last year, at the end of the school year. And we need to fill in those sections of the middle school and both high schools. And then the last, the new position, is athletic trainer. And if you remember, in the past, we had an athletic trainer, but that was a contract position, contracted with a local organization, and they provided the trainer. The cost of that has gone up every year, so it really is more cost-effective for us and gives us more control over where and when and how this athletic trainer is going to work. This will allow us to have the athletic trainer at every home game, as well as every home practice. They will be here during the day to support the depression protocols, as well as the health and PE program, too. So those are all the new slash replacements that we have in our budget this year.
So breaking it down, as we do for the public, we do have to break it down to the three parts of the budget: administrative, program, and capital. As you can see, you can see the numbers for this year as compared to last year's budget totaling out to that $47,133,657.
So if you look at the budget in another way, the general support, instruction, transportation, community service, and undistributed categories are here. And just for your information, in the undistributed category, that is mostly benefits and debt service, so $14 million of next year's budget in undistributed is employee benefits and about $3.3 million is debt service. And so the revenue adjustments for next year, there's a really welcome increase in state aid of over $1 million, decrease in the pilot revenue of about $14,000, increase in fund balance of $253,681. The increased tax levy represents a 2.47% increase for $722,000, an increase in the use of reserves for $137,148, and a total budget-to-budget increase of 2.187, or 4.87%. So when you look at the revenues in this chart, most of them are pretty self-explanatory. As I said, the over $1 million increase in state aid, the Medicaid revenue is staying the same, the pilot being reduced. You will see the other revenue sources, a little over $600,000, and that includes revenue categories such as BOSI's aid, interest and penalties on tax payments, and interest on deposits. The applied reserves, and I know that that was mentioned in the reserve plan that was approved by the Board in October of 2020. And then the fund balance applied to balance the budget of about $250,000. And so the increase in the taxes for the district residents is kind of viewed in this way. So if you have a house that has an assessed value of over $100,000, your annual increase is just under $60 or monthly, just under $5. So people can take a look at this chart and sort of figure out what they think they might end up having to see as an increase in their tax payments.
So the voters will be voting on the 18th on three propositions. The first is the school budget itself, $47,133,657. As we always do, we have a part of our bus replacement cycle. There's a bus proposition. This is for two 65-passenger buses, so those are the full-size buses, and then two 30-passenger buses, so those are the smaller buses. That is all, again, it is part of our replacement cycle, and we will be, I believe, tonight, declaring a few of those vehicles surplus, so we keep the, our fleet, safe and up to date. The third proposition is a capital equipment proposition. This was actually proposed in last year's budget, but as in discussions with the board, it was decided to put this proposition off for another year. This is similar to kind of a bus replacement cycle. This is really the replacement cycle that we need for our capital equipment. So what do I mean? So we are, we'll be replacing several of our pickup trucks that go back to 2006, 2008. These are some of the trucks that we used to plow with, a dump truck, some of our trailers. With our new projects, certainly here at the high school, we've added a lot more plowing. We add a lot more sidewalks. So that equipment will help maintain our new capital projects. We have our turf field. Some of that equipment will be used to maintain and groom the turf field. It's really kind of just to bring our maintenance equipment up to stuff with what it needs to be at this point, so that we can maintain our facilities. And that is $359,750. I always certainly want to thank our board members, all of them, especially those who can get out and then decide to stay in. But we have three people running for three positions. This is the order that you will see on the ballot. So it's Michael Bacatzis, Edward Meisel, Camille Adoma. It is a three-year term, and you can select three for the three-year terms. As a reminder that our budget vote is May 18th, the voting takes place in the high school band room from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. If you need to register to vote, you can do that any day from 8:00 to 4:00 at the central office, part of the new stipulations from the state this year. COVID-19 may be selected as a reason for temporary illness to get an absentee ballot. Please look at our website. And again, I'll repeat at the end, you can always call or email Lisa Semiglia, our board clerk, if you need an absentee ballot. Those are due by 5:00 p.m. on the day of the vote. So you have right up until the day of the vote to get those absentee ballots in. Again, as a reminder, the qualifications for voting. And for more information, Lisa Semiglia is our board clerk. You can call her at 845-402-8582, or email her at lsamiglia@highland-k12.org. So this concludes our public presentation of the budget. If there's any questions from the public or from the Board of Education, certainly we'll take any questions or comments.
Tom, are we also going to be doing any robo-call reminders of the vote? Have we established that yet?
So we, I'm sure we'll be working with the union to work on doing the robo-calls to remind, as we normally do. Yes, we haven't had those conversations yet, but as we get closer, we will, you know, get that word out, as we always do, to vote. But we're going to, tomorrow, Mrs. McLaren, Mrs. Doudilemic, and myself, we're going to film this in a closer, close-up setting. So we're going to use E32 with a nice backdrop, and we're going to film this presentation, because again, this year, there's really no large groups of people meeting. So the, you know, the senior citizens group, the veterans groups, they're not meeting because of COVID. So we're going to film this presentation in a more intimate setting. We will post that on the website, so it's easier to get to, easier to see and hear. And then we'll also send that out to different groups in the community. I'll do a live presentation to the Rotary at one of their meetings, and then certainly we'll make sure that we hit each of the faculty meetings for our staff.
You said that was issue that was made in the calls?
I believe usually HTA helps with the calls, yes.
They make phone calls to membership that live in the community. So they may not be HTA members, but they could be, you know, community members at a logistics that live in the community.
And probably other organized groups, as in CSCA, you know, that whole bunch.
Yes.
They're also placing, they're also placing signings in our community urging people to get out of the vote.
No, absolutely. We value the partnership we have with both HSA and HTA, helping to promote and pass the budget.
More of a comment than a question. I just wanted to thank our local politicians, along with those in Albany, who appropriated additional state aid to schools. It made balancing this budget a little easier. It certainly goes through great effort between the business office, but the additional aid comes at a welcome time, and I'm confident we're putting a fair budget in front of the taxpayers.
Just a quick comment. Foundation aid now is somewhat resurrected. Is that moving forward? Is there a formula that they're going to implement as far as how foundation aid now is going to be resurrected back to the districts?
I haven't seen any details on how they're going to move forward with foundation aid, but there does seem to be a movement to reinstate it and bring districts up to speed.
All right, good. I think that'll help all issues. Anyone else? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you to the board, and again, thanks once again to Dr. Gottlieb for his assistance.
Okay, is it expected, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, is it expected that we won't see Don after this evening?
We will not see Don at all.
I think he deserves a round of applause, Don. Thank you so much.
Okay, as we close the public hearing, we move on to our regular meeting. Under acceptance of reports, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, acknowledges reviewing and accepting the following reports as presented at this meeting. Board meeting minutes, April 7, 2021. Letter report, April 2021. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom. All those in favor? Opposed. So carry. Under personnel, does anyone have an issue taking personnel from A through D? That was good. Can I have a motion to take personnel? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion?
Again, I'd like to thank the faculty that are going to be working at the Bridge After School Academy. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. Student rep. I believe Farah is here. Carry, did you think that was Farah? Farah?
Wait, this is okay. Sorry. So as for the high school, as far as updates, I think we've been pretty well. The same, what I said in the last meeting, I think it's carrying over. We feel, we feel safe in the building. I feel like the precautions that we took for COVID-19, when we're all implemented back into school, I think that's going well. And as for senior events that we are planning, I feel like it's going well. Staff and faculty have been really been trying their best to provide seniors with the best care that they can. I think that's sort of really reflected on how the students feel.
Feedback. Any questions for Farah?
I do. You know, as, as, as we talk about the easing of restrictions possibly coming in May and June, does the senior class feels that it has enough celebrations planned? We know that you, you've, so much has been taken away, Farah, over the course of the year for our seniors. So is the senior class good with how the end of the year is wrapping up, knowing that the high school administration is so open and communicates so well?
Well, in feedback from students, I feel like we are kind of saddened about the restrictions for graduation. We do want all of our family members to be there, and we're changing our guidelines. I'd be like, maybe it could work at the same time. We understand that not everybody can come. But as far as prom, I know that prom is going on the day before graduation, and we're doing powder puff. So we're really doing the best that we can just to provide seniors, like, the best care as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Farah. Under business and operations, budget transfers be resolved. Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following budget transfer for the 2020-2021 school year, as presented to the board at this meeting. Budget number 7981 for $15,000 to cover salaries through year-end. Budget number 8035 for $23,000 to cover BOSI's billing. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Tom. Discussion?
Is that a new item? We're stating the purpose there. Did we do that before, or that came about?
So I had asked a couple of minutes ago for us to start doing that, just so the board and the public's aware of what the purpose of these transfers are.
Thank you, Mr. Bon Jovi. It helps board members to...
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. Change order for the $8 million capital project be resolved, Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent. Hereby approves Hudson Valley EC&amp;M's change order for project at the high school as follows. Change order number COEC008. Description of work: DEDUP unused contingency order. Amount of a DEDUP of $265.67. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Camille. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. Surplus vehicles be resolved. The Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following vehicles, be known as surplus, and at the district disposes the vehicles in the least costly manner as is, where is, as requested. Bus number 156, which is a 2010 gas, and bus 158, which is a 2011 gas. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Heather. Discussion?
And that's normal. These we put out to auction, sold to the highest bidder.
Right. Is the superintendent going to bid on one of them?
Uh, probably not.
Okay.
Not this time.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. So carry. Just some superintend's comments. Farah?
Good evening, everyone. I have just a few updates for you. First of all, we had our April Equity Committee meeting, direct, we're calling it, the Acumen, the Acumen's. At that meeting, I presented the survey results that I had presented at the Board of Education meeting at the last meeting. So we had some discussion on that. I shared everything with them. From the feedback, I'm receiving the individual committees. There's an administrator on each of the committees, so they are disaggregating the information a little bit more, getting very specific questions about ways to filter the survey results, so they can look at it very specifically for their needs within the committees. Just a reminder that the June 8th Board of Education meeting, the committee will be doing a presentation to give you an update on what we did this year, and then action items moving into 21-22 next year. And then I sat on the curriculum, or I sat in for a few minutes, the Curriculum Subcommittee meeting just before this meeting, to look at summer work and then work on curriculum moving into the next school year. So there's really a lot of work that's being done, and I cannot thank the volunteers from the community, from the school, our students who are giving so much insight and doing so much light work to, to help our, our district be more inclusive and encourage belonging with all of our students. So I think we're all very proud of the work that that committee has done this year so far. Last week, Carol Panash and I met with each of the building administrative teams to talk about some nuts and bolts, literally, of technology as far as collecting our one-to-one devices at the end of the school year, putting up a plan, or putting together a plan for how that's going to happen in each building. We'll be sending that out to parents soon. Most of the collection for in-person students will be done the last couple of days of school. And then we have a specific, a specific day where remote students will be able to return their devices. And then on top of that, we really had initial discussions about exactly how to move this one-to-one initiative forward next year, going on the assumption that most students will be in person. So how are we going to use that one-to-one, that device to enhance what's happening in the classroom, as well as, again, talk about the logistics of how are we going to distribute them again next year. And then Carol and I had conversations about, of course, cleaning and getting them ready, integrating the new technology that we bought into the whole, into a whole program. So those conversations are happening. I've been meeting with each of the non-tenure teachers, just to kind of recap the year, do a little reflection. Again, my big question with them has been, what about this year do we want to keep? What do we want to move forward into next year, as well as, you know, how are we adjusting to September? What do we need to do moving forward, as well as just support? This has been a difficult year, and as you can imagine, for our newer teachers, it's an even bigger lift than for our more senior teachers. So those have been great conversations. It's been really nice to, to be able to touch base with them. And as an administrative team, we've begun preliminary discussions about the federal relief money from the various COVID acts, you know, what, what maybe our priority areas are. We still have not gotten specific direction about exactly how we apply for this aid or what the process is. We assume that that should be coming fairly soon, but we're at least talking about, you know, what our thoughts are moving forward. So that's it all.
Questions for Farah?
More of a comment than a question, a couple of them, actually. Sarah, I just want to say that the presentation of the information for the diversity committee at the last meeting was very compelling, it was very good. It was the good, the bad, and the ugly, and I appreciated that. So I'm glad to see that's going to be used in future discussions. Also, comments that I've had with some community members as far as what's evolved maybe as a best practice that could be preserved possibly moving forward were the, the online parent teacher conferences, which were helpful, because I think usually it's a challenge to get to a building in a normal school year, so you got to get to parent teacher conferences. But having it virtually, if that, if the time slot didn't work for you, I know they were very accommodating about another time and date, and you still got to see one another and in the comfort of one's own home, talk about their child's progress or lack thereof. So, you know, just something to share that...
I think that's a really good conversation, even on a broader standpoint. I think that, I think this year, in all these experiences of being on Zoom, not only in our professional life, but in our personal life, I really do think that we need to look at some of the traditionally in-person things we've done last year and see if that's the best mode. I really, you know, even at our Board of Education meetings, we had more participation when we were virtual. And I think for that exact same reason, that you can, you can, you don't need to worry about childcare in the same way, or, you know, you're not fitting it in to the very busy lives that our students are, I think, going to start leading again as we move forward. But we've even been talking about it with the Equity Committee. I think it's just easier for people to volunteer if they, they can just be home and do that instead of having all those other things. So I definitely think that would be a conversation going forward. And, and I've had similar feedback from teachers about parent teacher conferences. feedback from teachers about parent teacher conferences, I think that they enjoy that as well.
Any other questions or comments?
This could be, I have a comment too, just something moving forward, just hoping that we can see more technology integration, so we have the devices now, and, you know, our kids are going out into the world where that's what they're working, so just want to give them more exposure, hoping that we can work with teachers, give them the training that's needed to help make this more part of what we do day in and day out.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, so speaking about technology, our music department has put together an unprecedented presentation. So, coming on May 14th, save the date, the high school presents Wonderland High, a musical comedy, this is going to be a virtual school play. So if you go to our website, there's an icon right there where you can purchase tickets, it is only $10 per person, or really $20 for a family, so you're really, you're going to get a Zoom link to our play. And each student is going to be in their own location, and then the entire thing is kind of, is brought together with the magic of computers. So it really is an amazing project, a lot of work on behalf of our students, under the direction of Aaron Bradley and Dan Short, our music department, so I'm really looking forward to it. Again, that is May 14th, 2021, I know the students are looking forward to it, this might be a one, hopefully, this would be something that we will come back to in person, our plays, because certainly I know we're going to miss it. I don't have a specific date to ship, but just a reminder, so if you recall, we do have our 2021 Hall of Fame inductees already announced, the Husky Pride winner, Darlene Plachek, and then our Hall of Fame, Henri's Hobie Simpson and Scott McFarland, so we had an Ed Foundation meeting today, we will be doing a separate just-in-induction ceremony, it will be a dinner, it's going to be in the fall, either late October, early November, and it'll probably, it'll be during the week, at, hopefully at one of our, kind of our local venues, yes. So it'll be at a local venue, and this will be kind of a harvest celebration to induct those people. And then our plan in the Ed Foundation then is by then next February to get back to the traditional fundraiser of the snowball. So this will not be a fundraiser necessarily, this will be related induction ceremony and a celebration. I want to also, I'll just, I can, I know it's on the agenda for new business, but I can just do it during my, my report here. So again, just planting the seed for next year's board calendar. So I sat down with Mrs. Niglia, we worked for hours on this, looking at the possible next year's Board of Education, I know, I believe you do have that in your packet under your information. And we basically are, you know, mirrored the same board schedule that we have this year, but not that we need, we do not need a decision tonight, but one thing to think of is really that reorg meeting. So if you look at July, just the way the calendar falls, the 4th of July falls on a Sunday, so Monday, the 5th is going to be the holiday, and we do have to have that board meeting in the first week, the reorg meeting. So we put down, we could do the reorg meeting either Thursday, July 1st, so get it done right away, or we could do it Tuesday, July 6th. And it really depends on when maybe people have plans on perhaps extending that holiday weekend at the front end or at the back end. So did not, you know, anyone have any thoughts?
Yeah, I'm rooting for July 1st.
I'm in agreement, I will not be available on the 6th.
Okay.
Heather's rooting for the 1st.
And again, I, I think we, last year, if it was okay, again, we don't need the decision tonight, but we would like to start those at 5:30 if possible, in the summer, just because it's, you know, it's hot and it's, you know, it's a long time, just kind of waiting for those of us to wait around until 5, until 6:30 or 7, if that works out. So we would have the one meeting, possibly July 1st. Then we have August, it would be the 3rd and the 17th. So we always have two meetings in August, we drive in one early in August, so that we have still hires to make that we would, we could get them hired and then still have, if they're held to 30 days, they could still start school on time. And then the 17th for any last minute business. That was just mentioned, and I, I throw that out not to get a big discussion now, but we did talk about, you know, it is sometimes tough to get to meetings, and the summer is a tough time, maybe for people to get out, I know some people might be away, so the board might want to think about maybe those August meetings, doing the two August meetings via Zoom. It's just, just a thought. September, school starts, so if you remember, the first two, the superintendent conference days are going to be the first and second. So I actually like when it falls like this, we will have the two superintendent conference days before Labor Day weekend, the Wednesday and Thursday. Students start the 7th, which is Tuesday, and then our board meeting would be the 8th, because we try, and we've done this, like this the past couple of years, it is a, a long day, it's a tough day for a lot of the people when it's the first day of school, and then you have a board meeting that night, it's exhausting for a lot, any of us who are involved in school, which, I leave a sorry. And then the second one, we get back on schedule, so September 21st.
Doing a good job, guys.
Now, October, we, due to some scheduling conflicts with some of our top key personnel, we had, did have to shift the October meetings, so it would be the 12th and the 26th. Then the meeting in November, we're just one meeting, as we've been having, Tuesday the 9th, one meeting in December, Tuesday the 7th, one meeting in January, Tuesday the 11th, one meeting in February, Tuesday the 8th. Back to the two meetings in March, the 8th and the 22nd. April, you can see where the spring break falls, so it'd be the 5th, and then the 20th, so that Wednesday, the 20th is that, that would be the VOSI's budget vote night. And then May 3rd, and the vote is on the 17th in 2022, and then June 7th. So, no decisions tonight, I'll put this on an agenda, again, perhaps the next agenda, and then we can adopt it at the next board meeting while you have time. So if you have any thoughts or input that you want to let me know, you can call or email anytime. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. President.
Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Okay. We'll move on to the Board of Education, new business, first reading of multiple special education policies. So I had an opportunity to go through those, there's quite a few, I know some questions have circulated.
If you people ask the president and answer the questions.
I mean, this section deserves a little bit of intro, understand that this area is in the area of much regulation and law.
There you go.
All of these policies went to our attorney and came back with comments, so the Policy Committee did review those comments, and for the most part, supported the recommendations from Legal. There's one that's standing out that I just wanted to talk to you about. 7642, it's called 12-month special services or programs, I think that's the one, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but regular school is a 10-month program, the 12-month program means July and August, and it's an, it's an area that's also commonly referred to as extended school year. So we went back and forth between, do you call it extended school year versus 12-month? And I, I lean towards leaving it at 12-month, because board policies are really for board and community, public, and I just thought that connected better. So as you're reviewing that, you know, are, are you comfortable with 12-month, or should it be extended school year? And perhaps Patrick, you know, at the second reading, might add a little bit more, Sarah. But that's really, you know, everything else that I can, there's nothing else really tingling that we had a great discussion about or changed much, as Legal had reviewed them prior to the, to the Policy Committee meeting and review.
Thanks for the information, Mike. So we'll hold this as our first reading, we'll wait until our next meeting to go to second reading, hopefully at that point in time we can adopt.
I did want to thank the leadership of Mr. Pecatius and the members of the Policy Committee. We did go through all the policies, so we have completed reviewing our policy manual. Almost completed the policy manual, no, I think we've completed it. And so we'll be keeping up with the, any input from Erie One, but we have kind of gone through it once this year, so I do want to thank the whole committee for their work. That's Mr. Pecatius, Howard Dudley-Lemich, Bill Zimmer, Carly Jacobson, and myself, and then, as needed, others, yes.
Thank you, guys. Okay, as Mr. Bon Jovi mentioned, tentative Board of Education dates, keep those in mind. I think the, the critical one is, I believe everybody's okay with that July 1st, as the reorg meeting on Thursday, July 1st. So we'll make a final determination on those dates there at next meeting. Okay, creation of new position, be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approves the following recommendations, create a new position known as school bus attendant, as presented to the board at this meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, second by Ed. Discussion?
So due to the student needs, as the Mr. McCullough's memo states, so we have student needs on different runs, so we do need to create a new position, we've been covering this with subs for quite some time, so this will get us up to stuff as far as the covers that we need on these buses. We do, we do have the money and the budget, because, you know, we've had so many, you know, positions that weren't filled, or we haven't been able to fill, so there is sufficient money to cover this new position.
Tom, this will fit within the each SA contract?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Ed, any further discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. So carry. Anything under all business, anything for the good and welfare of the district?
I want to thank Mr. Murphy, high school assistant principal, for coming tonight just to oversee and just assist our sound guys, great job tonight, guys, with the sound, making sure everyone's mic is loud enough, I appreciate the effort.
Absolutely, 100% better, thank you. Okay, just a reminder before we go to adjournment, just to all the voters out there, please come out and vote, two weeks tonight for the budget, the proposition, and our school board members that are running again this year, so we'd like to see everybody come out and vote, thank you. Have a motion to adjourn, we do not have exact. Oh, sorry, Camille.
I just want to say happy teacher, appreciate this week from the board, it's going on, and also school nurses week as well is coming up, so just thank you all for all the work you do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn, we do not have to go back into exact, motion by Tom, second by Camille. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. So carry. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.